Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming to tonight's Planning Commission meeting. I'll ask Commissioner Wingate to rise and lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. We begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Carol. Could we have roll call, please?
Chair Baldino.
Here.
Vice Chair Newman.
Present.
Commissioner Camp Kellidoff.
Here.
Commissioner Wingate.
Here.
And Commissioner Heschler is absent.
All right, now's the time on the agenda for public communication. This is for anything not already on the agenda. So if you want to talk about D.R. Horton or anything, we'll have time for that later, so... All right, seeing no one, I'll close public communication. Consent calendar, I'm gonna pull the only item on consent calendar, which then brings us to item F. Can we just get a short staff report, please? And the item on consent calendar is a Director approval of an administrative use permit to allow a type forty-seven alcohol service at Jeddah, which is at two four three Main Street.
Yeah, Jeddah two four three Main Street is a new Thai restaurant in town. They've made an application for a type forty-one, which is a beer and wine alcohol permit. This was approved on February nineteenth by the Director and it is on your calendar for... To be received and filed. The applicants are here and are ready to speak about their restaurant.
Great. Any questions for staff? No? Okay, I'll open public communication. The first right will go to the applicant. If you want to come up, we have a huge home viewing audience. You want to tell us about your restaurant?
Good evening, everybody. I would like to take this opportunity to introduce the new Thai restaurant. We're both sisters, and the name Jeddah is from our family name. And absolutely, we want to bring an authentic flavor, also the family recipe. There's a lot of item on the menu that you could never find at any other Thai restaurant. So it's... We're glad to be in El Segundo as well. Like, the community is so supporting. We've been operating for four months.
Four months, yes.
Four months now. Really happy to be here, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. I've been there twice.
Okay.
And my younger child, who eats nothing, loved everything. So it's great. I wish you the best success and welcome. Welcome to town.
Thank you.
Aruk, do you have any other restaurants elsewhere, or is this your first?
We do. We have... This is... Jeddah is the third location. Yeah. The other two is... One is on Venice Boulevard, the other one is Culver City.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Venice Boulevard. And what are the names of those restaurants?
They're all different brand. The first one, BKK one oh one. And then the one... The one in El... Oh, no. The one in Culver City is Hidden Garden. So we position the three restaurants different, yeah.
Okay. Menus are a little bit different even?
The menu is totally different. The BKK one oh one is the first one, so that's why we call it the one oh one, 'cause we really new into the business. We want to be like an introduction for us and...
Are there more than the two of you sisters that are apart?
We start together.
More family, or no? Every... It's... Wow.
Yeah, just me and her, yeah. So that's like an introduction for... What we do is an introduction for the Bangkok flavor. So we call from BKK is the airport code if you go to Bangkok, Thailand. Yeah, and then the one oh one is an introduction. So that's based on our mom recipe too.
Oh, nice.
Everything is like remind us so much about family, like after we moved here, and then we just miss the flavor. So we creating exactly how like our family make it.
How mom cook for us, like the food that we go up with.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And alcohol was an important concept at home, too, I would imagine.
The other two restaurant doesn't have an alcohol.
I'm kidding.
Yeah, but this... I think in this Tao, a lot of customer come in and ask for... Ask for like, "Do you have a BNY?" So we decided to try to apply with the license.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Yeah. Welcome.
Great. Welcome, guys. Thanks so much.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments? No? Okay, I'll close public communication. Any further comments from the DIAs?
Nope. Excited they're coming. I don't have any issues or concerns.
Great. Okay, then I'll accept a motion for approval.
I'll move to approve.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For zero. Okay, thank you. All right, next, written communications. We have an email that we were provided with, with an attached article. Anything else?
No, and this item is related to the agenda item H.
Right, which we're moved to right now. Next up is Agenda Item H two, Possible Amendment to the Affordable Housing Requirement Within the 540 East Imperial Avenue Project to Provide Eight Affordable Units Rather Than Six Affordable Units, and this is the D.R. Horton Town Home Project. Could we have a staff report, please? Oh, let me start with my disclosures. Okay, I met with Nick Brio. I've got July sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to talk about the potential changes. And then I had a conversation with Melissa McCaffery and Jill Jones. They are county attorneys for the County of Los Angeles. And then I had a conversation with Doug Smith, who is the L.A. Regional Counting Planning Commissioner, just about what L.A. is doing about housing and finding out more information. And I also had a conversation with council here to answer some questions I had.
And I went through the townhomes personally.
All right.
I've been through the townhomes as well.
Me, too.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. So this particular project dates back to two thousand and sixteen, when it was originally approved by the Planning Commission and ultimately the City Council. The project before you tonight, better known as D.R. Horton Project, it includes fifty-eight total units out at the site. It's separated between more of a single-family component on the southerly side and a multifamily condominium portion on the northerly portion of the site. So you have a total of fifty-six or fifty-eight units, twenty-four single-family, and thirty-four multifamily, split up amongst six different buildings out there. So at that time, the developer agreed to provide for some affordable housing units, and that would count towards the city's share of its regional housing needs. And so the term RENA is a term I'll be using a bit through the presentation. But speaking of RENA, which is again a regional housing needs assessment, that's a number that's produced by the state, trickles down to the local governments, and it's our share of how much... How many units we need to provide in any one given planning period. So for now, the city is tasked with finding size to provide for a total of sixty-nine units. They're broken up into different income categories. So you have extremely low income, very low income, low income, moderate, and then above moderate, which above moderate is, in essence, your market rate type of project. So the developer... So, yeah, okay, so to provide some context of what extremely low, very low, and low-income categories are, there's a table here at the bottom, and the income limits, or bands, if you will, are dependent upon a couple factors. It's first and foremost based on the county median income, and it's also based on the number of persons in a particular household. So for example, a... We'll talk about a four-person household. So an extremely low household of four would be making anywhere from zero dollars to twenty-nine thousand and fifty dollars annually. For very low, that would go from twenty-nine thousand and fifty-one to forty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty, and so on. So those are the different income categories. Those are... The RENA has, like I said, specified certain numbers of units that we need to have in each of those bands. The current project would help us achieve or get us closer to meeting some of those requirements or those numbers, those target numbers. As I indicated before, the developer had agreed to provide a total of six. So two to the extremely low income, two at the very low income level, and two at the low income, very low and low income. So the applicant, well... That would ultimately be what would be left over for us to provide for in our RENA accounts. So developer has requested a change in the number of units to provide at the project. Initially, the developer wanted to ask to be exempt and pay an NLOF to the city. That was originally going to be considered by the Planning Commission last month, but the developer requested a continuance so that they could discuss further with city staff an appropriate program to move forward with to... That city staff could support. So since then, they have... We've, you know, we've been discussing this for quite a long time, but ultimately, what came before us, and which is now what before you, is a request to still provide for affordable housing, however, not at these income limits or at these income bands. So they would provide for moderate income units, but instead of six, they'll actually provide eight units towards affordable housing within the multifamily component. So that, in essence, reduces the number that we would have to provide for our RENA numbers in the moderate income category from twelve down to four. So why do we do this? When the... When you look at extremely low income units and what those would have to be sold for, so really, someone will ask, "Well, how much do these units go for?" Well, it really depends on what a household ultimately, you know, applies for it and gets approved for in terms of a loan, and that, in essence, is your effective price. And so at the extremely low and very low income, you pretty much have to sell these units at nothing, at zero cost. And even at that, there's still a... With these other housing costs that are associated, it still makes it very difficult for households to even, you know, come up with the basic costs for providing for HOA dues, for taxes on the property, and some of these other costs that are associated just with the day-to-day and month-to-month upkeep of a unit. So acknowledging that, and with the assistance of our affordable housing consultant, you know, we took a look at that, and we agreed, yeah. You know, what happens is folks at the extremely low and very low and low-income bands don't make enough really to really be a sustainable project. So at what point is it that we can have a for-sale project and have it be more of a success? And so we found that at the moderate income category, because, you know, those incomes are slightly higher, as you could see here, that, you know, it is more of a sustainable project. And city staff, as well as our consultant, agree that that is more of a sustainable level. So with that, you know, in discussing this with the applicant, ultimately, that is what they ultimately decided to do, was to provide these and market these for at a moderate income level.
What is the price at a moderate income level of the townhome?
So the sale price isn't known beforehand, because it's a factor of the size of the family and their income bracket. So at moderate income, family of four, they make sixty-nine thousand, three hundred or less a year, and we don't know how much less until we get the applicants. And then the mortgage is calculated based on a formula that not more than thirty percent of their monthly income would go toward their housing expenses. So...
Can you give me a range?
That includes the loan.
Somebody else may be able to do that math. It's just too complicated, but...
So you take the yearly, you divide it by twelve, that gives you your monthly income?
Right.
Right? And then you take thirty percent of that, and that's your mortgage payment?
Approximately the mortgage payment. It'll be slightly lower than that, because there's other factors included.
To take out HOAs and taxes.
No, HOAs are not. That's part of the reason why we're recommending that we go away from the extremely low and the very low, because they would still have to pay full freight on the HOA fees, as well as maintenance and everything else, and it's not sustainable. But we're just talking about the mortgage price. Thirty percent is the limit.
Right. I want to know what that's gonna... That range of that price, that they're gonna be able to sell that unit for at moderate versus the low, extremely low. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And kind of a follow-up question to that, I guess, is they're all three-bedroom units, right?
Yes, they are.
So do we not make an assumption on persons of household and what, I guess, would be the approval process to stop somebody from saying, "I'm a two-person household, so I'm purchasing at a lower price," and then the family grows, or...
Yeah, there's two parts to that. There's a stringent qualification process where they have to produce their tax records and their income stubs, and we do some other investigation, or we have a consultant do that, to verify that the household is, one, the size that they say, and two, has the income and not any more than what they say. And then after that, on an annual basis, the family is checked, not for income, but to determine that their household size hasn't changed in a way that would put them out of, you know, out of the range.
And another quick question about administrative costs to the city.
Yes.
Originally, that was for the six units, three hundred thousand dollars to be paid from the applicant.
That's the agreement, yes.
And at that level, have you figured your administration... Administrative costs, do you think that's reasonable per unit, looking at... This is an annual thing that you need to go back and check and confirm. This is... The city has a consultant that actually... I mean, is the city the... Like, who makes the decision about this?
Which decision?
About the townhomes themselves, that people qualify, that the application is... That they qualify?
So my understanding is that the developer would be the first point of contact for anyone interested in purchasing a unit initially. And then they would submit all of their paperwork to the developer. The developer would sort of screen and make sure that they meet the qualifications. Then, once the developer's comfortable with that, then they would send that to the city. And the city would review it for the initial sale. The city can approve, you know, verify that everything is up to par.
The city does it? Not an independent... Okay.
Yeah, but we wouldn't be the first point of contact for those initial buyers. And at that point, it's just a matter of, sort of on an annual basis, checking to make sure that the people who purchased the unit are still living in the unit and that their circumstances haven't changed.
Annually?
Annually, right. So that... So the annual process after the initial sale would be a pretty low... I don't think it would be a really intensive review. It'd probably just be a matter of having the... Getting in contact with the purchasers, making sure that they submit some sort of affidavit to the city, and then if the city wanted to, we could, you know, sort of do a spot check or inspect if we wanted to.
And what kind of... What kinds of things would the city look for? After the initial applications are submitted, point of contact, they meet their criteria, and then they give it to the city. Does it come to the... Does it come to the planning department? Does it come to the legal department?
No, it would come to us.
Come to you guys, and you would take... What kinds of things do you look for?
Well, we would... Well, realistically, we would use the money then to go to our consultant to verify these things, and...
So it really does get passed through to a consultant at that point?
Yeah.
Because you're just gonna look to see what, that they're...
Yeah. And what we're looking for is significant changes in family size, because you can see, for example, in the extremely low, if you go from a four-member family to a two-member family, the threshold, when you are no longer considered extremely low, has dropped about six thousand dollars. So one question is, who left? Was it one of the income earners, or was it one of the non-income earners?
You're talking about year number one, after a year, and the next, yeah.
In the follow-up years, yeah. So all these questions will impact whether or not they still qualify.
Sure.
And then what happens if they don't qualify? Are they evicted?
Right.
They would be... They would be in breach of all of the covenants and all of the entitlements that they've entered into and have been recorded on the property. So among the different penalties would be, they would owe the city... If, for example, they were to sell the unit for, let's say, a market rate, and the city found out about that, then they would owe the city the difference between, you know, the sales price that they sold it for and the sales price that they purchased it for. So there's protections in there to make sure that it remains affordable.
So they would owe the city?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Because the way that this is structured now is that the difference between the moderate income price and the... Between the moderate income price, which is the affordable price, and the market rate, is considered almost to be like a city loan. We're almost subsidizing the housing to bring the cost down from the market rates. So the idea is that the city would be entitled to something if someone, you know, intentionally misrepresented or was not using the unit the way that they said they were going to and agreed to.
But to be really clear, the city's not fronting any money or...
No.
...picking up the difference in the loan or anything, or the sale price.
Correct. Yeah, we're not putting any money. It's just...
It's just the body of the city as a body, and then the only real liability that the city has are administration costs annually.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And then just to add to Greg's point earlier, I think what the city would be most concerned about is someone renting out, you know, part of the unit or the entire unit. And in my experience, that happens when people start complaining about, you know... I think people would tell the city if there was something...
The neighbors.
Yeah, the neighbors, other people who purchase the affordable units, "Hey, you guys should check into this. There's someone living there that, you know, wasn't the person that was originally there." So in my experience, the city would find out about it through complaints from the neighbors, and then we could inspect. And then everything would be recorded on the property. So any of the purchasers would take the property, knowing exactly what the requirements were, and the city can enforce that, if that's, you know, if that's what they agreed to.
So can someone sell their unit if they... How does that work?
They can sell their unit, but it has to be at an affordable price.
So if somebody buys it, they qualify, they're stand-up straight, but it's unfortunate, I have to move back to Minnesota. So we've got to sell, bring my family back. What can they do with that?
They can... There's a couple different options. They can sell the unit. They'd have... If it's within the affordable period, which is twenty years, it has to stay at an affordable price. So they could sell it at an affordable price, and the city would make sure...
So the city then would have to step in to be sure that the next person that's buying it...
Right.
Is of the same level of income?
Also qualified.
Qualifies?
Exactly.
Okay. For twenty years?
For twenty years.
Twenty years is the number.
Twenty years is the affordable period. And then the other option would be, in the resale restrictions that the buyer would sign now, they could come to the city and say, "Hey, look, I've been relocated out of state. This is out of my control. There's something like an extreme hardship exemption," where the city would have to approve of someone, say, like renting it. And what we would do is, if they wanted to rent it, we would make sure that they were renting it at an affordable rental price. So in other words, the original purchaser was affordable. If they, for whatever reason, have something out of their control, they can no longer live there. They could approach the city. The city could evaluate it. The city could say, "No." Or the city could say, "Okay, we'll work with you, but we need to make sure that it remains affordable for the affordable period." So that's also built in as well. So there's some flexibility, but the most important thing from the city's perspective is that these units remain affordable for twenty years, which is the affordability period.
And would there be a covenant on the land?
Yes.
That would enforce for that for twenty years?
Yes.
Yeah.
This gets filed, and it has all the terms and conditions, so anyone... Everyone's on notice of these requirements. It has the forms. If they want to sell, they have to give the city notice. The idea, correct me if I'm wrong, is that for twenty years, if you sell it, you sell it to another qualified low-income individual.
Yes.
And the seller gets a portion of that equity. I think it's fifty percent. Is that what I read?
Yes.
And then fifty percent goes to El Segundo for a housing trust fund.
Yeah, there's an equity contribution, which is fifty percent of equity, and then there's also something called the housing trust fund, which is... Yeah, there's an equity contribution, which is fifty percent of equity, and then there's also something called the housing trust fund, which is five percent of the area meeting income, which would also go to the city, which would cover some maintenance or some administration costs as well.
Five percent is the housing trust fund.
Five percent is the housing trust fund.
Does that currently exist or is that something we have to create?
That doesn't exist right now to my knowledge, so that's something we would have to create.
Okay, does this give any guidelines of where that fifty percent equity that goes to the city is going to?
It would go to other affordable housing projects.
Okay, so that would go also to the housing trust fund to build more affordable housing or to administer more affordable housing?
Conceivably, or to, or to oversee any existing projects within the city.
Okay.
Yeah.
So as long as we're clear, the equity to be gained will be reallocated toward future affordable housing projects within the city?
Yes.
Okay.
During the twenty-year period or even after the twenty-year period?
Right now, the way it's structured is it's only, we're only focused on the twenty-year affordable period.
What happens at the end of twenty years? Is it, all bets are off, it all goes back to market price?
Yes. At this point, uh, we haven't, um, there's nothing in the documents that we've prepared at this point that would address that situation.
Why did we take it for twenty years? I'm just curious. What's that, why, why do we feel that being a magical number?
Uh, twenty years is the minimum for the city to meet the state's RENA number, which Eduardo mentioned earlier, is Regional Housing Needs Assessment. So that satisfies the city's, uh, RENA number for, um, uh, owner-occupied, for-sale units, um, that are affordable units. So we want to establish the minimum to, to, uh, meet that requirement by the state.
So you also used the term requirement and I was, um, I ha, happened to have called Mr. Eduardo earlier today. Can you clear up, it's not a law, the state, the city of El Segundo is not mandated to have to provide it. It is a recommendation to. That's a question. It's a form of a question.
Are you referring to RENA?
RENA.
RENA's a little tricky. Um, it, it, as it stands right now, it is our responsibility to provide for the ability to build those units. We're not responsible to build them.
But it's not mandated, but it's, it's recommended that we do, cause it's the right thing to do.
No, neither. It's, we're required to provide the opportunity, so we have to identify enough land or buildings in the city. That's the end of the requirement. That is a requirement. The, um, the responsibility to build these rests with the private sector, okay?
So what happens if we don't meet the requirement?
Nothing currently, but that is very likely to be changing soon.
Okay.
So.
You shake your head like this, huh?
Yeah. There are, there are laws that are pending and they get introduced occasionally in the last couple of years that would introduce certain penalties such as, uh, automatic fast-tracking and things like that. We don't know what it's going to be when it comes.
Yep.
It got really close last year, it didn't get approved. We expect it to come up again this year or the next session or sometime soon.
So one can only assume that anytime that we've, we've got a project of, of any reasonable size, this subject will come up and, and if there's an opportunity there.
Yes and no. This one is an issue now because at the time that it was originally approved, when the school district still owned the site, the city took it upon itself to say, we wanna whittle down our, our RENA numbers and especially the hard ones, the extremely low, the very low, the low. That was not compelled upon us by, by HUD, for example, or by the state or by any of the funding institutions. That was our decision as a way of, of doing our part to, to achieve our housing goals. So we're not strictly bound by the rules of these other organizations like HUD. And so some, sometimes, I know the question of affordability period has come up. Some of these have very long affordability periods as a minimum. We're not bound by any of that. We can make our own rules because this is our requirement and this was, uh, our requirement at the time that it was imposed. The reason why we chose twenty years is because we don't wanna necessarily be in the housing business forever. And so twenty is the minimum that we, in order to get the credit for the RENA. So it's important that we do show credit toward RENA because if we don't, um, make progress, except for in the highest category, which is above, which I think we, we may have already cleared, but this project will certainly clear that one for us. We may be subject to a harsher number in the next round or other, you know, punitive things that Sacramento comes up with. We really don't wanna do that. We wanna show that we've made an effort. Now, because these are for-sale units, we feel that it doesn't make a lot of sense to stick with the very low and extremely low. It, it doesn't make economic sense for the developer, it doesn't make any sense at all for the buyers. We would not be doing anyone a favor to give them one of these units. They would be out within a few years just because they couldn't keep it up. Even the, just the property taxes would be too much for them. But moderate income is, is, as you can see, is fairly generous. A family of four, uh, the moderate income limit is a hundred and sixteen thousand. It's not a great living, but you can make it go of it, right? So, so that's, that's the background behind all of this.
Is there an opportunity with this, maybe this is a question for David, but if we're talking about making an adjustment to look at the length of time that they're restricted, um, as affordable units, is that on the table as well?
I can answer that, yes. I mean, we are subject to the rules that we make. We can make it any length at all.
So you mean longer than twenty years?
We can make it longer or shorter. If we make it shorter, we don't get RENA credit. If we make it longer, then we're just in the housing business a lot longer. That's all.
And it's my understanding that the developer is going to give a certain amount of money to the city of El Segundo in order to maintain us being in the housing business.
Yeah, three hundred thousand dollars.
It's three hundred thousand. Is that sufficient for twenty or more years?
It's hard to say what twenty years will bring. Um, I th, I think it's, uh, a question that might be fair to ask to the applicant.
Do we have any idea since the city does have contractors or people that they work with that maintain this kind of thing or another city that would have someone who would be able to supervise this real estate business for us?
Well, we were in agreement with the three hundred thousand for, for monitoring six units for twenty years, so if we start making adjustments to any of those numbers, I think it's reasonable to reassess that.
Thank you.
But I don't have a, a benchmark for you.
This is curiosity maybe, maybe it's a D.R. Horton question, but the down payment on these, because I know in some cities you will give a silent second, that's not happening here. Has there been any conversation about how, I mean, if I did the math really quickly, a four-person household of moderate income would be a mortgage of about five hundred and forty thousand? Is that, so a down payment would be possibly another hundred thousand on that? Uh, where that comes from?
It's five percent.
It's five percent is the restriction. Okay, so twenty-five thousand.
Yeah. Uh, we think that at the upper end, it may be closer to six hundred a month, six fifty maybe. So that gives you an idea of what the month, to answer your earlier question.
Yeah, I, I did the math too. I did the, uh, high-end, one fifty-three, five hundred. Uh, you divide that by twelve is twelve thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one. Thirty percent of that is three thousand, eight hundred, thirty-seven dollars. It's about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The low end on that, uh, the eighty-one, four hundred, divide that by twelve, it's, uh, six thousand, seven eighty-three. Thirty percent of that is two thousand, thirty-five. It's about three hundred and fifty, so five hundred's right in the middle.
And that's the difference, uh, where you're holding the family or the household's size the same. Keep in mind, a smaller household will pay less, a larger household will pay more.
Well, I did the, assuming their income is thousand and the.
I shouldn't say pay more.
Eight-family household.
Yeah.
Just to get the range of it.
The qualifying range will vary by household size is what I meant to say.
Gotcha.
So there's a lot of moving parts.
Yes, there are.
So median is median on that. It is not a, it's not forty-eight-five. It's just, you're using moderate income as a recommendation for a household, uh, number of persons, that bottom line?
That's the maximum amount of income for a household to qualify as moderate, and moderate is defined as a hundred and twenty percent of the median.
Got it.
It's, it's close to that anyway.
Okay. So that's the maximum qualifying income as we're talking about it today?
Yes.
I just wanna make really clear that, so what's in front of you is this affordable housing agreement, um, which is between the city and, and D.R. Horton. And we have copies in the back too, if any members of the public wanna see it. Just to be clear, the way that the affordable housing agreement is structured is that just because the developer is asking that these be raised to moderate does not preclude someone of low income or even very low income to apply for the units. Um, they can still, D.R. Horton can still accept any, um, uh, any of the income categories below moderate. So it wouldn't be something like where a low, low-income person is precluded from applying. It's just where, it's just, this would open it up to more people who probably can afford these particular units better than low or very low. Uh, extremely low, very low, and sometimes low are more common in a rental situation rather than a owner occupancy, um, for-sale units.
I, I did read that in the staff report and there is no prohibition, but D.R. Horton selects the buyer and then the city either approves that they meet the qualifications or not. So to assume that D.R. Horton would voluntarily choose to sell something for a hundred and ninety thousand versus five hundred thousand dollars, I, I don't know if that's something we can rely on as really helping out low and, and very low. I think if we allow them to sell at moderate, they're gonna sell eight units at moderate. I think that's a fair assumption.
That's a reasonable assumption.
Cause they're, you know, they're not in the business of low-income housing, they're in the business of selling homes.
That's right.
Do we have any idea what the application process looks like? Is it first come, first served? Is there, uh, you know, first lottery for El Segundo residents?
The only preference written in here is for military families.
Okay.
And I think we asked about trying to get a preference for residents of El Segundo to apply, but that didn't make it in the final draft. I don't know if there was a reason for that or.
Well, the draft that you have is actually the, um, the current covenant that's based on the other income levels and it's, it's recorded on six properties.
Right, this is, this is the one we're changing.
It would have to be changed, so there's an opportunity to, to make these sort of, you know, amendments to it in the process, cause it has to be amended anyway.
Right. Is there any legal reason why, if we're making the recommendation to prioritize milit, preferences in page four, item C, preferences for U.S. military, developer agrees that all considerations being equal and as permitted by law, it will give preference to prospective purchasers who are active members or veterans of the U.S. military at the time of purchase. So any reason why we can't insert D in there? Same vague language about all, you know, all other constituents. Why not put something in there, give preference to residents of El Segundo?
Or people who work in El Segundo who are public employees?
Yeah, I mean, this might be a good, you know, um, the developer may wanna speak to this, but I think what we're, there's also a concern about, you know, sort of limiting the, the field of potential applicants, if you will. To my knowledge, the only issue that came up previously was the, uh, the military, um, active and, and veterans. But, uh, it's not, um, I don't think it's, um, something that the city can't do. It's just whether or not, um, it would, you know, potentially limit the, the amount of applicants and, at least when it was extremely low and very low and low, we were concerned that we weren't gonna get any qualified applicants for those units.
Eduardo, we hijacked your presentation. Do you wanna get back on track or?
Now, after what was said, I, I'm pretty much done.
Really?
Mic drop. Okay. But, um, but no, I guess, just to, just to circle, um, around and just kinda close it, close it up here. You know, the, uh, the applicant is, has, has been discussed, providing for eight moderate units instead of the six, which from, uh, from a staff standpoint, is something that we can support and do recommend. It, it's consistent with our housing element. Uh, it furthers our RENA, uh, numbers and, and trying to get, uh, you know, closer to, to meeting that. And, uh, it is a twenty-year affordability term and, uh, and that's, that, that is something that, that the city has requested and, uh, you know, ultimately, I don't think it really makes any difference to D.R. Horton, but, uh, you know, that is something that the city does request in order to ensure that it counts towards our RENA numbers. And, uh, in terms of the, the equity share there, you know, that is something that, that, you know, we can further assess and look into and, and come up with an appropriate, um, uh, program for that, so. Anyhow, so with that, um, you know, we can continue the dialogue and, uh, but, uh, we do recommend that the planning commission, um, approve or at least, uh, yeah, recommend that the city council approve the amendments to allow for eight affordable units at the moderate level rather than the six at the lower-income unit levels. So with that, that concludes my presentation.
And interestingly enough, this is all really new territory. The city is, uh, not really have a tremendous amount of experience heading down this, this particular subject matter, nor have we had a lot of, um, opportunity to provide, you know, the housing element. Um, there's not been new construction, so that and.
Uh, Mr. King?
I don't think we knew the ramifications of what extremely low, low, very low versus, you know, when it came before planning commission and it was approved. That it, that this discussion, it's all, it was also hypothetical at the time. They couldn't talk about how much they thought they were gonna sell for or what the process really was, so there you go.
Um, I have a question about the reimbursement agreement. It's paragraph six, page nine of sixteen of this document. It says, "Homebuyer shall enter into a reimbursement agreement substantially in form attached to exhibit D," and it says to be filled in later. Are you guys with me here, Mr. King?
Sorry, which page, Mr. Chay?
Page nine of six in the, on the second attachment.
Oh, okay.
Paragraph six, top of the page.
All right, thank you.
Uh, homebuyer and city shall enter into a reimbursement agreement substantially in form as exhibit D, which I don't think there's anything for me to read in exhibit D. But it says, "Which provides the city may make payments to cure a default or delinquency on the first lien," which is their mortgage, right? "On the condition that homebuyer agrees to reimburse the city for any payments made to cure a default or delinquency on the first lien." Uh, and that's gonna be secured by a subsequent reimbursement agreement, deed of trust, enters into yada, yada, yada. So is, explain to me this provision and does this mean, I know it says "may," but we shall enter into a reimbursement agreement and that means we have to? And so if someone goes into default, you're telling me the city is gonna pay that mortgage?
I think in, in, um, order to prevent the bank becoming the owner of the property, we may.
Okay.
But it would depend on the circumstances, how much is left owed and how much we would expect to get otherwise.
And then there's a right of first refusal in here, right? If someone sells, the city has the option of buying that unit for whatever the, the low-income housing rate is, correct? And then we would own, um, low-income housing unit?
Yeah, I, I believe that's, I believe that's correct, yeah.
And that's the city's option. I can't imagine the city doing that, but that, that is an option in here if we wanted to become landlords and have long-term, moderate-income housing. Okay, well, you, you're right, we don't want the bank to take it, cause then they're gonna sell it to whoever and we lose our.
And we're not at the top, so we may not ever recover anything. So in order to prevent that from happening and have any chance at all of recovering, we may decide to cover it as a loan, I guess, to the owner.
Okay. Well, I'll save my comments for later then. But thank you for answering that. There are restrictions. I'm now on page ten of sixteen, paragraph eleven, occupancy standards. "Homebuyer shall not enter into an agreement for rental or lease of the property or any part or portion thereof." Uh, I understand we don't want someone to buy this and then rent it out at a higher rate. You don't want someone to, to lease it out. But we're also under a state mandate about home sharing and we're gonna discuss short-term rentals. So if it's the intent to not allow Airbnbs and short-term rentals, which may help someone afford this house, then I think that needs to be clear before someone signs this thirty-six-page legal document.
We can definitely, uh, fold that into that paragraph. Uh, I think that this paragraph would trump state law on that issue.
Okay.
Cause it's a private restriction that's been recorded on the property, just like a homeowners' association could trump, uh, general state law on short-term rentals.
Okay.
Good call, Ryan.
And now I'm gonna take you to thirteen. Thirteen point two, page eleven of sixteen. "Calculation of payment due of contingency equity participation." So this is the paragraph that explains to the homebuyer, uh, when you sell this, ideally, you're selling it to another qualified, moderate-income individual. And the owner who sells it gets a portion of the equity, and there's a chart on page twelve that gives you an example. Um, and basically the city gets fifty percent of that equity. What is not in here, which I would like to see added into this, is after the twenty-year term, when this unit is sold for market rate, the city should be able to recoup those equitable funds to put into our housing trust, because otherwise whoever happens to be owning and living there basically wins, wins the lottery. And they're gonna reap the benefit of the city subsidizing this housing, and if there is a windfall, that should go back to the city so we can provide additional low-income housing. Does that make sense? So I'm not sure, I'll leave it to you, Mr. King, to put the legal words in there, but that's an idea I have, which I'll ask for consent before we make a formal motion, but I'm just throwing that out there now for the discussion.
Can you go over that one more time, Ryan?
Okay, so you see these numbers?
Yep.
What this says is that, um, when you go to sell your moderate-income house?
Yep.
The, uh, these charts. The, uh, these charts are all, all gonna change, right? Numbers are gonna go up, so you're gonna be able to sell that house, not for market, but for more than you bought it.
Right.
So you're gonna realize some equity in that.
Right.
The homebuyer obviously gets some of that equity to move on and, and buy their next house, but the city has a claim to fifty percent of that equity. And they get to deduct the money they put in, their down payment, improvements, things like that. But in this calculation, the city would be due thirty-four thousand dollars in this hypothetical. That's money that would then be rolled into El Segundo's housing trust fund to use to hopefully create additional housing. And what I ask for is, okay, this talks about during the twenty-year period, or thirty-year, whatever we do, uh, I want something that says, "When that period is over and you're selling at market after you purchased it at the subsidized rate, that we get that equity."
Something of that at that time.
Yes, right, and I think what would be fair is, you know, whatever the adjusted moderate-income level rate is twenty years from now, right? They, they would get equity up to that, and then anything above and beyond is a windfall for the city.
That makes perfect sense.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
That's great.
But it's gotta be clear in all this, when people sign up, they know what they're getting into.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if there's a consensus on the planning commission, we can definitely take a look at that. I think one, uh, one issue that our office would be concerned about is, you know, the idea is that, um, a homebuyer is, is restricting themselves for a set period of time. And I think what our office would be concerned about is anything that really extended beyond that time period. I mean, the way that these are usually structured is there's a set time period, and once that time period is over, the, the buyer is then, you know, freed of all of these restrictions, and that's really the whole idea behind this affordable period. So, at least from my mind, I would be concerned about anything that extended beyond that. Um, so we have to take a look at that, any of the legal issues, but I, I understand, uh, the commission's thought process, and, um, if there's a legal way to do it, um, we can explore that and we can fold it into, you know, this document.
So your concern is thirty, forty years down the road, this person's still gonna be burdened by, you know, foregoing their, their equity on a home they lived in their whole life or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's almost like, um, it's almost like a caveat to the affordable period. I mean, the idea is that you've signed up for twenty years, but oh, by the way, if you sell it in year thirty-five, you're gonna have to, you know, pay a, a, a portion of that money back to the city, and I think that's a little bit counterintuitive to the whole principle of an affordability period. But, um, again, um, you know, I hear what the commission's saying, um, and if there's a consensus, we can definitely explore that, and, um, if you wanna include that recommendation, we can look at it and we can present our findings when we take this to the city council.
Perhaps we should extend the twenty-year period to thirty years.
Have you had experience with that? Um, have you had, Michelle, experience with that?
I've worked for developers who've, have an affordable component, and in my experience, thirty years has been the, the minimum, but again, that could be something that was required by the jurisdiction or the county a lot of times.
Those rental units?
Both.
Yeah.
I mean, the rental units are in perpetuity essentially.
I, I've learned, first of all, I've, I've learned enough to know I don't know enough about what we're talking about, but I've tried to educate myself, and I know that if you are a developer and you're taking federal funds, those impose restrictions as far as time and as, uh, amount you can rent it out on. What, what is interesting and, and unique about this is the only restrictions being placed on this affordable are those placed by the city. There are no funds, and correct me if I'm wrong, there are no government funds or tax credits or, uh, what was it called? Density bonus laws at play here, which would, uh, be a state or federal restriction on either time or anything like that. So as I said, we're, we're kind of free, we're, we're doing our best to comply with the state, uh, requirements, and, um, you know, the Gavin Newsom has filed lawsuits against cities because they're not complying with their low-income and moderate-income housing. They, they sued Huntington Beach, um, and so it, it's incumbent upon the city to do our best to, to satisfy these, these mandates, uh, by the state. But, uh, again, be- because it is, uh, just a city process, we, we have more flexibility, if that makes sense.
No, it does. I mean, I think the thought process between, behind twenty years versus thirty years, twenty years is essentially one life cycle in a home, so is the intention to have eight families have a stake in an affordable house? Or, you know, thirty years might be two cycles per family. It's just, what's the goal? And I don't have the answer for that. Um, I, I have a personal opinion, but I don't have any answer.
Um, okay, and then just before we open it up, Eduardo, the first go-around, the first proposal from D.R. Horton was lift all restrictions on the six units, so they could sell those six units at market rate, correct? And when I looked up online, the townhomes were listed at nine-hundred-sixteen-thousand-six-hundred-thirty-five dollars, right? That's what I Googled for the, the waypoint project.
I think they might be a little more, no?
That's, that's, that's the minimum.
Okay, that's without all the upgrades and the marble and all that fancy stuff. Uh, that's, that's what I found on the website, so that's the number I'm gonna go with. Um, and for doing that, they were going to give a, uh, benefit to the city of three million, three-hundred-forty-one-thousand-four-hundred dollars. That's what I have from the last staff report, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and now, um, city did negotiate with them, said, "We don't wanna let go of our housing standard," and now we're getting eight affordable units or moderate, moderate-level income units, which are gonna range from sell prices of three-fifty to six-fifty, five-hundred, being right there in the middle, right? But the only funds are the, uh, three-hundred-thousand dollars to administer it that they've already agreed to, correct? There's no additional three million dollars being added to this change that they're requesting, correct?
We, we did propose to the applicant that that may become an issue, so I think they're prepared to discuss that.
I'm just trying to lay down the facts before we get into this.
Yes.
Okay.
But as it stands, three hundred thousand is the agreement.
But they already agreed to that earlier, and that was just the administrative?
Yes, that's for the administrative portion, yes.
Okay. All right, uh, any questions for staff? I wanna open this up to public communication. We've got some folks here.
Nope, I'm good so far.
Okay, yeah. So, right now, what I'll do is I'll open up public communication. Uh, the first right is gonna go to the applicant, and then anyone else who wants to talk is gonna have time to come up and tell us their thoughts, okay? So let's go ahead and open it up. The first right will go to D.R. Horton.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission. My name is Fernando Villa, and I am, uh, land use counsel for D.R. Horton for this project, and with me are Marian Adriatica. She is with, uh, senior management of D.R. Horton and division counsel for the company, and Nick Bierow here, who probably has the longest institutional knowledge, um, on our side anyway, for this project. He is the project manager and has been involved with this, um, property since the time it was acquired and working very closely with your staff altogether. I just have a few points to make, because I think, uh, we, I should make it very clear, are very supportive of the staff recommendations in regard to our amended, uh, affordable housing program. We concur with it. We've worked very closely with, with the staff, with Eduardo and everyone else, David King and others on the city side, and I think this is a product of a lot of thought and care to have a sustainable program. We, I think all had good intentions with the original program, but when we looked at the numbers and especially in this rising market, it became very clear that the original program was unfortunately not going to succeed, because these, as, as already presented, are extremely low, very low, and even low-income households would just not be in a position to... Putting aside what the purchase price would be, um, assuming even as, as at a zero purchase price, these households couldn't maintain the basic upkeep, the HOA, the property taxes, the insurance, all the basic upkeep, they, they just couldn't. And it would be a, an endless cycle of defaults, and we wanted to avoid that. We wanted to make this a successful program. And at the rec- suggestion of staff, we agreed that a moderate-income household regime makes the most sense. It, they, these households, as already presented, I won't repeat what's already been told to you, are in fact going to be in a position with the adjusted subsidized purchase price, that'll be obviously a lower price, it'll be a hit to us, that they can afford and that will have a sustainable life cycle for the twenty-year term. I wanna focus on a few points that were raised that, um, I've had a chance to talk to our team about, uh, to address the concerns. You, um, Commissioner Wengate, men- mentioned the administrative costs that, um, are now in place, or at least in the original agreement, of, of three-hundred-thousand dollars. And we have, we are willing to increase that to four-hundred-thousand dollars, and, and it's based on a fifty-thousand-dollar-per-unit sort of projected cost, which was embedded in the original projection, so we had three-hundred-thousand-dollar fee for the, your cost of administering the program, primarily to pay for your consultants to undertake the qualification process and, and the monitoring process o- over the twenty-year period of time. So we are willing to increase, um, to accommodate those extra two units. We think it makes sense, it's fair, and then so just wanted to make that clear. We also, uh, wanted to address a couple of other points that have been raised. One concerns the extension of the term to thirty years. Commissioner Keldorf, you'd asked or wondered about whether we could increase... We appreciate your point about increasing the cycle. We defer to the city as to what term it wants. This is really, I think, your concern and your policy decision to make, not ours. From our perspective, we're fine if you want to increase it to thirty years, um, but again, we defer to your leadership as to what makes sense from a policy perspective, but what is more desirable, what do you want to accomplish? Um, I think it's been well-presented that the twenty-year term meets, the city's view, meets the RENA obligation that you're good to go. I, I think, um, something you said, Commissioner Newman, that, which is very powerfully resonating for us, you're entering new territory. It is new territory, not just for your city in terms of, of providing for affordable housing and, and complying with the RENA allocations for your city, but also in terms of what the state wants, where the new legislature is going, frankly, where the new governor is going. You, you, you put it best, Commissioner Valdino, that we have a governor and a new leadership in Sacramento that is very cognizant of these RENA allocations that have been on the books for a number of years, and many communities have simply not been able to or just haven't, have chosen not to actually enforce or provide for those allocations. And I think, as was said to you earlier by Mr. McLean, there is no enforcement mechanism. It is the law, it is a mandate, but there is no, up to now, real mandate and real teeth to the law, which is why the governor saw fit to bring a lawsuit against various cities. But as already indicated by your staff, there is legislation in, in the bu- you know, in the process, and it may be soon on the books, and the spectrum, and I think you've already noted this, of possible enforcement legislation is out there, and it's better to be ahead of that curve, and we hope that by allocating three, two-thirds of your RENA allocation for moderate-income households, which is the largest allocation of your RENA allocation, will help, will go, help your city go a long way to being ahead of the curve and meeting those, those, um, those allocations and, and that mandate. So, I think you're, one last, one or, one or two last comments. Um, uh, Mr. Chairman, you, you, you're right, there are no government funds. This is not a part of a density bonus law or other program. We are under no restrictions to have some stated term. This is, in many respects, a tailor-made affordable housing program designed to meet your policy goals, what you want to accomplish for your community, community within the confines of the RENA allocation, and we've tried as much as we reasonably could to work with your staff to help that reality. We do believe very strongly with this amended affordable housing program regime, that this will be a sustainable program. It will bring residents, uh, into your community and, or those that are already here who can afford these, um, these new household requirements and can become a viable part of your community. And on that note, the last comment I want to make, we're absolutely fine if the city would prefer that it add, in addition to preference for veterans and families of veterans, uh, to have a preference for residents of your city to the extent permitted by law, we're fine with that, that change if, if the city so chooses, if your commission so desires to advise the council. So I hope I've addressed all comments that we wanted to raise. We have, as I mentioned, our, our team here and myself to answer any further questions, and we thank you very much for considering our request to amend this program.
Thank you. Um, can I ask logistically, how does the application process work? If someone is moderate income and they wanna apply, what, what do they do? Where do they go?
Well, I, I will, I will give you my perspective from, I'm, I'm just a lawyer, I will be actually administering, thank goodness. Uh, but from what we have set up, and we work very closely, again, with your legal staff and your, and your planning, uh, staff on putting a process together, D.R. Horton will be involved in the initial screening process. The applications come in, and we're required to show the city, your staff and your staff's consultants, who has applied and who we believe qualifies. Ultimately, we can make recommendations on, on the qualified applicants, but it, we are not the ultimate decision-makers. Your, your staff will say, "These are the people that we..." because they've qual- they have to qualify, and that's, otherwise, it's a waste of time. The lender's not gonna loan, and we just, we're wasting everyone's time. But as to the qual- whatever their income levels or household numbers are, we will present our pool of qualified applicants, once we've done the initial screening, to your staff, and your staff will say, "Here's who you are going to proceed with," right? And at that point, we go through the loan process, and this, your, your, your consultants will advise the city going forward, and you will take this, this, uh, second mortgage on the subsidized, uh, gap. And then after those initial, the initial round of sales for those eight units, for the term of the restriction, whether it's twenty years or some other period of time that your city sets, your city, with the assistance of the consultants, at no cost to you, because we will fund that with our administrative fee for the life of the term, will, a- as and when sales occur, an owner wants to sell for whatever reason, heaven forbid, if, uh, if an owner defaults and you're then taking over that loan or making sure that it goes to another qualified household, your city then becomes responsible for screening the prospective buyers, right, and making sure they qualify. But again, you will have your experts helping you do that process. We will be out of the picture, of course, because we will...
Right, you guys do the first sale, uh, qualify, wanna get the loan. If there's a sale in that twenty or thirty-year period, it's up to our consultants to qualify them and make sure that the program is...
Correct.
Still being administered. That's what the four-hundred-thousand dollars is for.
That's right, and as already mench- as already, uh, presented to you, there's an annual process where, again, each household is, is evaluated, see if they still qualify, that, there isn't, hasn't been any material change in their household, uh, household circumstances. No, uh, in, in improper or forbidden rentals, whether it's Airbnb or anybody else, uh, are being made and so on. So you will have a baked-in process with, uh, the assistance of your experts to make sure your program is complied with, and it is, uh, the homes are, um, being, um, used by, lived, lived, uh, by qualified households.
I have two questions. How are you going to advertise these units so that moderate-income families know they're available at a lower rate?
I, I'm going to have to defer to our, our, our team, uh, as to how the marketing's being done. I do understand, however, there is a, going to be an aggressive marketing-sales program that where we're gonna reach out to the community, and I believe we are running that, our sales program by the city for evaluation to make sure that we reach out to households. We think, I think we have a couple of, um, resources we use. There's a county, um, website and other websites that we use where we reach out to, uh, qualified households, that that can take place. I, beyond that, I don't know for any more details, but the city, uh, your staff and your consultants will help us make sure that we reach out to appropriate, uh, households.
Because now, if, if someone goes in to look at the units, it's one-point-one-million dollars or about that, or more. So if, um, a, a moderate household came in, they would not know that they were able to purchase.
That's, that's correct. That's right, and we are going to take...
So instead of going to a website, would the sales personnel speak, you know, say, "If you qualify, five-hundred-thousand dollars"?
We have, uh, as a part of our marketing, I understand our marketing-sales program, um, a, a protocol by which we follow for, um, people who come to apply, we will describe the homes that we have available for those households and let them know what those, what those criteria or requirements would be for, for those households, making it clear, it's only eight units, it's not all of them unfortunately, but, um, but we will make clear as to the prospective purchasers and the brokers who are representing them, that there is an affordable housing program, it will be advertised as such. I don't know the, the range of advertising that will be and to, and to which sources that we will be submitting them, but they will, all, all of our, uh, our marketing-sales program has to be run by your staff for approval.
Great. Uh, you were speaking earlier, and you said, said something about a second mortgage.
Yes.
Could you explain that?
Yes, the, so, the, um, as I understand it, a- and your, your consultants can, uh, explain this better than I can, the city will hold a, a second mortgage on the subsidized portion of the property. So the, the primary lender is going to say, "Okay, well, this is, you know, this is what the sales price of the, of the, of the, of the home is," um, and the city will have a second mortgage to make sure that the, um, you know, the price is, is at a subsidized rate, and if there's any default on the loan, as mentioned earlier, your, uh, city can step in and cure that default to, to maintain ownership or control of that, of that, uh, property and, and resell it, uh, as and when it cures a default, um, and then can recoup or retain its, its investment in the property via that, that second mortgage. I don't know...
But the city is not putting up, let's say you sell it for a million and it, you know, the adjusted price is five-hundred-thousand dollars, the city is not putting up five-hundred-thousand dollars.
Correct.
The city has an interest in the equity of that property valued at five-hundred-thousand dollars.
That's right. That's right.
That's what you're referring to as a second mortgage.
Yes.
Entitled-only.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not, it's kind of all spelled out here.
Right, non-monetary.
And you will have, that's exactly right, you will have no, none of your city money invested in any of this.
Thanks for the clarification.
What selection criteria are you using for the eight units?
We are using the income, the 2018 income limits, and those, by the way, will change.
No, I mean like which units?
Oh.
How are you choosing your units?
What we have proposed, and I believe we have concurrence from your staff in terms of their recommendation, is we, all the units are three bedrooms at the multifamily, it's all of them affordable and market rate, and we have proposed to allocate them amongst the various buildings. No one building can have more than four units, and that's how we're doing it. So, we have a nice spread around the community.
What about, I know when you buy a model home, you know, you're all excited, and then you get to go and pick all these different upgrades of marble and all that stuff.
Yes.
Are these just going to be built the same in a standard formation? Is that the plan?
Yes, each and every home, without consideration if it's a market rate or an affordable unit, will be built to the same standards. You will see no difference whatsoever in the amenities and the materials used, they're indistinguishable.
Okay. All right.
And they'll have the same HOA advantages, rights, obligations, as any other homeowner would have.
This RENA is whole new territory for you as well, as a developer?
Not for me, it's not.
For D.R. Horton?
Um, no, I don't believe it is.
You've done, yeah, so when you came before planning commissioner or whatever, you're very aware, very comfortable heading down this particular path because this is something that cities do all the time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have to speak at the microphone, because the folks at home, huge home viewing audience, they can't hear you.
No, this isn't new territory for D.R. Horton. We've done a few affordable housing projects.
Right.
This is just a little unique in the sense that when we had entered into the affordable sort of entitlement condition, it was three years ago, there were a lot of unknown variables at that time, and things have significantly changed between three years ago and today. So, and that's why we, at least Horton wants to take the opportunity right now to say thank you to city staff for all the work that they've put into sort of coming up with this modified affordable housing program that can really work in this market, in this city, that could be successful.
Right.
Since this is your first real true affordable housing-for-sale project, you do want to be successful going out of the gate, and so do we. We have an investment in the city, and we'd like to see the investment carry through and make housing affordable to a greater spectrum of families.
I have another question you may be able to answer. Property taxes, how are these, in your experience, units that are sold below market value, how are property taxes assessed? Are they assessed at the true market value or are they assessed at the purchase price?
They'll be assessed at the purchase price, so the affordable sales price.
Thank you.
Do you have an idea of the HOA right now?
The dues?
The HOA dues.
We're estimating about $325.
And not that it's terribly related, but of the total market rate homes, do you have an idea of how many have been sold to date?
Seven.
Seven.
Of the townhomes?
Correct.
So, let me ask, your first go-around is, we don't want any affordable housing, we want to sell six units at market price, which is around a million bucks, so you net a million dollars. And then, to ask for that, you were offering $3 million to the city, correct? That was the first go-around.
Correct.
Now, the change is, and the rationale was, we can't even give these things away, even if we gave them away free, these people would not succeed, they would not be able to afford it. So, we bumped up to moderate, we have a sales price now from $350 to $650, half million for eight, that's $4 million, but there is no additional benefit to the city being offered of that $4 million increase in profit. Is that correct?
I think the additional benefit we're offering to the city is now we've added two additional affordable units.
Which is great.
To what was previously offered at six. It's, I think we came up with this proposed program because it does work. It really did not work. We, when we initially proposed the in-Luffy, we were thinking that the in-Luffy was the only option other than the six units at the extremely low, very low and low, and that was just not going to work at all. So, you know, when planning staff came up with the idea of going moderate income on all units, we were discussing what additional benefit could we give the city because we were able to sell the units for a higher sales price. And the option came up to offer the additional two units, so we could further satisfy the RENA requirement for the moderate income. So, that's kind of where, how we got to this point today.
Can I add one thing to you? Think about the economics, when we had this 3.2 or 3.3 million offer, in lieu of setting any set aside, we're now saying we're going to provide eight moderate-income housing units. And so, assuming the $400,000 difference that you noted, which probably is about right, that's about the equivalent to the 3.2 or 3.3 million that we were offering to pay. So, it's still, for us, it's still the same financial impact. And we think for the city, and again, this is our view, it's ultimately your staff and you to decide this, that this will be a greater benefit for your city, not just because we have two more units, and that is, I think, important, especially in this community, but also because you will have an eight-unit viable, sustainable program that'll last for the term of the restriction, whereas before, there was no, in our view, no viability at all to the previous program.
And I do know that you submitted a report from your consultant crunching the numbers saying it didn't work, and then the city's consultant, are you from, what's the name?
Michael Baker.
Michael Baker, right. The city's own consultant did their own analysis and came up with the same result, that you're correct, if we did low, extremely low, it just financially is not going to work.
That's right.
Okay.
There was definitely consensus on that conclusion. And so, we spent the better part of the last year or so trying to figure out a solution to that, because we wanted to have, as Mary Ann mentioned, we want to launch our project, make this a quality, high-quality residential community for your city, and help you launch your affordable housing program in a way that's going to be equally, if not more, successful.
I haven't been inside the townhomes, but I did go to the single-family homes, and they're spectacular, I mean, they look very nice.
Thank you. And we think our townhomes are equally spectacular for all households.
My wife couldn't drag me over to those, so I didn't go. All right. Anything else from the applicant? Nope?
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Now, we'll open up public communication. Anyone else want to step up and tell us your thoughts?
I think those televised, or I would have done my hair.
I can assure you, I exaggerate, I exaggerate the size of the home viewing audience.
So, hi, I'm Stephanie Soder, I live in RENA. I was actually here the first time D.R. Horton, I was sitting over there when D.R. Horton showed up and just happened to be in City Hall, and they said, hey, by the way, homeless, you know, people are concerned with homelessness in the city, we have a great idea for you. We'll eliminate our low-income housing and give you guys some money. You could put it in a fund, maybe buy appliances with it. And so, it just rung so, it rung so fraudulent that, of course, and no offense to you, I'm sure you're very nice people, but I'm just, I, isn't anyone concerned, like, is no one in here is thinking, why is D.R. Horton, a company whose net profits were $1.5 billion last year?
That's not me.
I mean, do you think that they have the citizens of El Segundo's? I mean, is that why they've decided to make this decision? It can't be, right? Do you want me to wait or dance? It just, I don't, Mr., Sean, you can't hear.
Yeah, speak, if you can speak to the microphone.
Sean Byrne. He has been so kind, and I've pestered him, and he's given me all kinds of documents, which I so appreciate. So, I, like you, know nothing about this, nothing at all, but a little reading will teach you a lot, and one thing that you asked about, that I first look at, like, in the work I do, you kind of want to think about what people are motivated by. And I have to imagine a Fortune 500 company is motivated by profits, they've got quarterly earnings to do. I have to also consider the fact that interest rates have gone up, housing market has slowed down, I mean, there must be some connection, right? What is, what is the impetus for a company who is publicly held to do something for this city? They made a contract with this city, they promised us that they would provide these low-income housing, and it's not just the housing and the low-income levels, it's the people that would go into that housing. And when you look at our specific plan from, I don't know, 2012, I think, for the land itself, and you read it, the first idea seemed to be that it would be senior housing, right? Option one.
Correct.
And that was going to, for the RENA, it was going to take care of a lot of the units, right? Because you're going to get a lot of low-income senior citizens, and then the assisted living even more so. So, then there's option two, and I don't know anything about this stuff, but just what I've read. So, I imagine something goes on and there's some conversation somewhere, and then there's a decision like, eh, it's not really going to work, because who wants to be dealing with all those units of senior citizen housing, or whatever.
Do you want me to explain what happened?
Quickly, yes.
Okay. I'll be quick, because I was up here when that happened. The school district had the school site.
Right.
Which had been abandoned for years.
Yes.
And it was dilapidated and full of rats.
Right, right.
They came to the city to get the entitlements to, first, they wanted to provide senior housing, but they wanted to keep the land, they wanted to own the land, have someone build senior housing, and then the school would get perpetual income on that land lease in perpetuity, because schools are getting less and less money every year from the state.
Yeah.
They had one offer, and I think it was like $300,000 a year, and they didn't think it was worth it.
Right.
Option B, which was approved at the same time, was you can sell this off to a developer, and it's already entitled for single-family homes and the townhomes, and the price was like $27 million or something like that. Of that money, the district took $16 million and put it in bonds with the county.
Right.
And the interest only on those bonds is like $500,000 or $600,000 a year. So, as long as that school district doesn't spend that $16 million they've invested, they're going to recoup every year, you know, half a million dollars that they can use for their facilities. And the rest of that money is being for the fencing, you see a lot of fencing going up, they're putting that towards projects, so.
I think I remember this from a math party.
Yes.
Yes, I have heard, yes.
So, that is where.
I just didn't know what happened to this.
And then, D.R. Horton, they bought it, they had the entitlements, they made a couple of tweaks that they wanted to be done, and that was the first time they came around. It didn't have anything to do with the low-income housing element of it, it was like roof decks and FAR and things like that. And as they got closer to selling them, they looked at this requirement and how much they would sell it for, did a report, said that it's not going to work financially for low-income, moderate-income. The city hired their own consultant to verify that and came back with the same result, yes, that's true, if we put someone in this house, even if we give it for free, the HOA, the property tax, the insurance, because you got, in here it says, whoever buys it in moderate, has to insure it for the full replacement value.
Yeah, I read it.
So, that's, that's not cheap. So, yeah, the first request was, we don't want to do it, it's not going to work. City said, no, we need some type of assisted moderate housing, and that's how we got to where we are today. Was that quick enough?
Okay, yeah, I got that part.
Okay.
However, why, I mean, they've had experience with affordable housing, obviously. Why did this, why is this coming up now that the units are ready? And I know they came before, it was April I heard them, and I know in August they've, I've read all that stuff. I get that part, but what's the motivation for D.R. Horton to no long, why did they want to get rid of those units to begin with? Why did they do this cost analysis so late in the game, when the units were so close to being ready? You don't even have to answer that, there doesn't have to be an answer, but it should cause the commission some concern. And I want to just say that before I say, if you read the housing elements for the city, 92, 1992, goals were to provide, you know, the language is a little different every go-around, every six or eight years, but military and moderate income. The next housing element wants to address, then it mentions the low income, that's 2000, 2006, it talks, it breaks down the affordability levels into extremely very low. It's been a concern of El Segundo's from 2000 at least.
Right.
So, there's a specific plan written for the, I mean, okay, put aside the senior citizen housing, because it would have gone far for the, for the numbers that would have been helpful, so put that aside. It's obviously a concern, at least since, let's say, broken down into income levels since 2006, that's 13 years ago. And now that the units are ready and available to extremely low and low-income families, it's off the table.
I think.
I, sorry, I think, I feel like I know what you're going to say. I get it, but it doesn't make any sense, right?
Right, but I think what you're complaining about is a lack of affordable housing in general in the city of El Segundo.
No. I'm complaining because El Segundo has recognized that there's a lack of affordable housing, has made goals about affordable housing since at least 2000, and has done nothing in response. I am not complaining about affordable, I am no enemy to affordable housing, I am no enemy to eight moderate income. I believe like everybody with moderate income should be able to buy a home, especially in El Segundo. What I'm complaining about is that AB 72 is the beginning of what's going to be some enforcement activity. And if I'm the state and I look at El Segundo's past, I'm like, well, this has concerned you since 2000, and you've done nothing about it. And in 2018, 19, when you could do something about it, D.R. Horton, a company that makes $1.5 billion in net profits, you know, not in, doesn't actually make it, comes to you and says, you know what, it's really not going to work, let's figure something else out, how about we make a fund? It doesn't, it just smells, that's all.
Gotcha, but you are in favor of the eight units.
Look, but I'm not in favor, I'm in favor of them complying with what they agreed to comply with. And I, I don't want to talk about myself and the work I do, know what housing and stability do for families, and the opportunity for families who are in need to have this kind of housing in this environment and what it does for their kids is super meaningful. And D.R. Horton doesn't care about that, I assure you. These people might, but the company does not care, they care about their profits. And so, that is a part, and that's part and parcel of making these specific requirements and income levels, right? Because you give people a chance, and they don't have that chance now, and that's why the state cares, that's why the county cares, that's why the South Bay Regional, wah-wah-wah-wah-wah acronym, acronym cares, because it matters to families, and we have to do our part. We know that. Look at everything that this city has written, we know it. So, why is D.R. Horton now allowed to come and be like, you know what, you guys, it's really not going to pan out? I know that they have their consultant, I don't need a consultant to tell me if I make less money, I can't pay my bills. I'll do that for free, you know? Ask your kids, they'll tell you that. So, it stinks, that's what I'm here to say. And it, they shouldn't be allowed to do it. The contract is good for nothing then. Why didn't somebody else who bid on the project, there were two bidders, right? From what I read, I read a lot of stuff.
Probably more, bless you.
Okay. Several. How do we know that D.R. Horton doesn't do this every city they go into, make agreements to provide this, get the contract, come back three, or five, seven, 10 years later when the housing prices start slowing down, and be like, you know what, this isn't going to work after all? It just stinks. Sorry, guys, it stinks. Should we comment now?
Wait.
So, thanks for letting me go on.
Thank you.
I mean, it matters, it matters, and if this commission is going to make decisions about planning, read all of the information that's available, not all of it online, but Mr. Schonberg will be happy to provide it for you. Why write the, I mean, I don't know how many days it must take to write this stuff. It's terribly boring, it must take a lot of time, but it's done for a reason. What's the reason if we don't care in the end? Tada, bye. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I want to.
You got, Mr. Mesa, you got to step up to the microphone, tell us your name, tell us where you live.
Michael Mesa, live at 928 Sheldon. I'd like to know who it benefits, because we've all been screwed in our area because of them, and we want to know, is it a payoff to you guys? Is it, they're making the benefit? Who gets the benefit? Because we're not. My poor parents are living in a home that's damaged from them, and nobody wants to take credit for it, or responsibility for it. So, we just want to know who benefits from it, and like she said, is it because it's them? Nothing against them personally, but they haven't stood up to their bargain with us residents either.
All right. What, you've got to come to the microphone, otherwise it doesn't work. Just tell us your name and where you're from and.
Kelly Griffin, here in El Segundo. I just had a couple of questions, because this is new, as far as the units that are available, are they the units? I just had a couple of questions, because this is new, as far as the units that are available, are they the units right on Imperial Avenue? Okay, so it's not in the back.
The townhomes.
Okay, and the R H N A numbers, um.
RENA.
So those are mandated by the state, there's sixty-nine, I think I saw.
You've gotta talk to us.
Sorry, there's sixty-nine?
And then we talk to you.
Okay, got it, there are sixty-nine.
Right.
So we are going to have eight?
Yes.
Okay, what about the other sixty-one, are those in the process?
We're actually gonna have all twenty-eight of the above moderate income units as well.
Okay, so there are other you?
So if you see the breakdown, so there's above moderate income units, twenty-eight are required by RENA, and they're providing fifty of the, well, fifty-two under the previous structure, fifty under the new structure. So it's no matter what, that category gets wiped out completely. El Segundo could not build another new home at above market, at market rate for the foreseeable future and be okay with the state based on that. So we're really just talking about the extremely low, very low, low and moderate income units. There's a requirement in each of those categories, the argument is it depends on which units you wanna knock out first, essentially.
Sure, I guess, aside from this project, if I could ask, for those extremely low, low, very low and low, are there plans in the future? Or?
Well, I mean, as you can tell, this is the largest home development we've had in this town in, who knows, twenty years. We don't, we don't have land to build multiple homes like this. So the, the best thing we can do as a commission is try to get as many affordable units out of this project as we can. As far as additional projects, then that's a question for council on, you know, we're, we've got a subcommittee on, what is it?
Density.
High-density R three, not east of Sepulveda, but west of Sepulveda, kinda where that Constitution Park is, those, those apartment buildings. Uh, there's a subcommittee of this commission looking at, okay, if we revamp that, would someone come in and build a big apartment complex? And that would be another opportunity for the city to say, okay, apartments, great, we're gonna have some of these low-income, very low-income, but unless someone's building, you know, I mean, most townhome projects we get, three-town homes, six-town homes.
Right, I attended the homeless meeting, I think that was, uh, several months ago, and I do believe D.R. Horton or some representative was, they did come in and say, hey, we do wanna make more units available. I guess, going off of that homeless meeting, whenever that was, and looking at other cities and what they are offering, I know in Long Beach, they have a village which has veterans, families who were homeless and different organizations that have come together. Is that something El Segundo has ever looked into or would consider looking into, a partnership with, let's say, the V A and other organizations into creating?
Well, we're, we're limited by the land that we have.
Right. No, I get that.
I mean, if somebody were to come and present that project, we would certainly.
Right.
Hear it and encourage it.
Okay, I, I'm just asking the question, yeah, okay.
I mean, the idea is, you know, hopefully this begins a housing trust fund that will take some equity from these and put into use for future projects, but right now there is no housing trust fund, there is no money in the budget to build affordable housing. We have to do what we can to try to get there.
No, I get that, I understand, and I'm just listening, I'm just sitting in and listening with, uh.
I appreciate it.
Gavin Newsom, you're saying, coming in and actually, I'll quit looking at them, coming in and possibly suing cities or taking action on cities that are not, if you will, stepping up to the plate.
Yeah, he sued Huntington Beach, the state of California did.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Sure. All right, anyone else? Okay, we'll close public communication, uh.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, you might wanna give the applicant a chance to reply.
Great idea. Back to the applicant, of course, they look to their attorney.
No, I, I, you'll be happy to hear the attorney doesn't have much to say. I, I just wanted to say that we appreciate the comments expressed by, by your residents and are respectful of their views and, um, look forward to and hope to have your support. And request that you approve the, uh, for recommendation to the council, the recommended actions of the staff to modify the affordable housing program that we think will be successful for the city and for ourselves, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, any other comments before I close public communication? No, okay, I'll close public communication and further comments will come from the dais. Who wants to start?
Well, what other ways would this city of El Segundo have to provide extremely low, very low and low-income housing?
There are programs that we could adopt, um, inclusionary housing programs, so that if anyone built a, a project of a certain size that we could define, we could mandate that they provide a certain number of, uh, affordable units. And we can scale that up, we don't have that now.
My question though, Greg, would be, sorry, Mr. McLean, would be, would be, what would make that next project coming in any different than the project we have before us today? So, the, kinda the market rate will, will, I mean, these are not inexpensive townhomes, they're beautiful ti- townhomes and they provide, you know, they're beautiful. But for us to provide very low-income housing, as we say, if we actually give these people, um, here, you can, you can live because you only make this much money, um, which would be a wonderful thing to do. But they're not able to afford.
Right.
As outlined, HOAs, insurance, um, utilities.
Property tax.
Property taxes. So how would a city like this excluding new construction, because this experience is leading us to believe that we can't provide the low-income housing with new construction? Cuz not, people aren't gonna build new construction to be cheap and to be on the lowdown.
No, but there are certain benefits to developers that build low-income housing so that they, so they don't take the big hit. And I think the answer to that question is, we could impose a program that would require it, but I would only, um, find that to be successful if it was applied to rental units. So if we had a large development come in, say, one hundred units on a, on a property somewhere.
Apartments.
Apartments, then it would be reasonable for us to say, we could have extremely low, very low and low income in that, um, complex, because they're not going to be subject to property taxes or H O A fees or other things, just rent. And so, that's a, that's a fair way to address this problem. But when you put it into a, um, an ownership situation in this city with the prices the way they are and the way they're going, it doesn't work. Moderate will work, low is dicey, after that, it's just unworkable.
But, to be clear, low can apply.
Oh, yeah, they can apply.
Okay.
Greg, doesn't our senior housing qualify for a lot of this low, extremely low and very low already?
Um, senior housing is, well, at least for HUD, by definition, affordable housing, and I believe it's moderate, um, for its, for the, for the pricing. I'm not positive anymore, it's been a long time since I've done that. So, um, yeah, but you see, the thing is, the, the RENA number is issued every cycle, and right now the cycles are eight years. So whatever RENA numbers we had in the past are irrelevant. So for this eight-year period, we have, we have to, you know, make the accommodation for sixty-nine. We do not have to build them, that is entirely up to the private sector, we can, as I, as I mentioned before, step in and, and have programs that mandate these things, but we do not have that now. If our number for the next round, which comes out in, I think, two years, is going to be like six hundred or something like our neighbors have, well, then we might really seriously consider that. But sixty-nine is what we're required to provide for, we did do that, we are in compliance, our housing element is in compliance. And, um, all we have to do is sit back and wait for somebody to build it. And if they don't build it currently, we're not in trouble, but that may change.
All right, Greg, I don't understand why the senior citizens project doesn't qualify.
It does.
I know that there are.
It does, but it, it met a RENA of the past.
Oh, I see.
It doesn't meet a current one.
So we've got new numbers.
Oh, yeah, every, every, well, it used to be every five years, now it's every eight years, we get a new set of numbers.
Okay.
And which neighbor has six hundred?
Um, our neighbor to the east.
Wow.
Yeah. They have a lot more of empty land and underutilized land, so it's, it's supposedly distributed according to your capacity to do it. And the, El Segundo is recognized as a, as a city that doesn't have a lot of land left and there's not a lot of capacity, so that's why our number is relatively low. But there are cities that have numbers as low as two.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and, and, you know, as for, as for motivation of, from a, from a developer standpoint, trying to put myself in their shoes, why, we, why wouldn't they want a successful set of units? They're gonna sell these units for a million dollars to these people, that even if they gave it to somebody and then that would be a failure, that's not a good, that's not a good example for a good, a good, healthy project. So, um, I, um, I guess what I'm trying to say is that I think that it's pretty logical why they would then want to sell them for more money, certainly to be more profitable, because as has been pointed out, they are a business, but they do, um, seem to need to, um, make sure that it is a success, we want it to be a success, um. Hmm, that's what I have to say.
I think the eight moderate units makes sense, if you look at the numbers, because it would be awful if someone bought one of these units and then was not be able to maintain it and would lose it. I think that would be more heartbreaking than not being able to qualify at all. My concern, and I'm, I'm hoping that you can look at some of your consultancies, um, is the four hundred thousand dollars to manage these units for twenty or thirty years? Because there's an awful lot of legal problems that could come up. We know how hard it is to get someone to comply with a non-Airbnb restriction, um, making sure that somebody doesn't move out and rent their unit to somebody else when they don't really need to do that. I mean, there's an awful lot of possibilities for breaking the rules, and I think it could be very expensive, a very expensive legal step.
We can ask the consultant his opinion, if you don't mind.
Excellent idea.
You mind stepping up, we've got some, you thought you were gonna skate by this meeting, right? Tell us your name, please.
Uh, Damian Delaney with Michael Baker.
Damian, you're with Michael Baker, okay, so, uh, I guess we have some questions about logistically, what is it you're gonna do in monitoring? I guess every year they have to give you W twos, tax, returns.
So, no income, what we'll be doing is making a site visit to the home, making sure that if it's a family of four, it's still a family of four, if it's a family of five, maybe they had a baby or someone went off to college or got a divorce. We'll make a note, we'll, uh, check what the original, uh, guidelines were and make a determination and pass that on to the planning department.
Is that once a year, once a quarter?
Once a year.
Once a year?
It's an annual inspection.
Okay, and then, uh, someone wants to sell their home, are, are you, as a consultant, the one facilitating that process of selecting new applicants? You're replacing D.R. Horton as far as making sure they qualify?
Yes.
Making sure they're within the parameters set?
Correct.
Um, and I would imagine five years go by, seven years go by, these, these numbers change, right? Everything goes up, cost of living, all that?
They, they change every year, but, and they do always go up, but they're not guaranteed to go up.
Right, okay. I lost my train of thought from my phone, I apologize. Um, okay, so you'll, you'll administer, um, the yearly checkups and any transitions or sales thereafter for the twenty-year period?
Correct.
And are you comfortable that for twenty years, four hundred thousand dollars is gonna cover that cost? Cuz if so, I'll lock in that contract right now, that's a great deal.
Um, well, we had.
You've done this in the past, right?
Uh, yes, and I'm currently doing this up and down the state, so.
Okay.
Yes.
So the yearly cost of that is what?
The yearly cost of eight units? It, well, the certifications themselves, the recertification themselves, aren't very much.
Right, that's just checking a box, site visit.
And when they go to sale, that's where it gets a little more.
Sure.
Expensive, it would all depend on how many times the unit is sold. So when we came up, when I came up with our pricing to the city, we estimated, the average home is sold every seven years, um, and did it that way for twenty years. So two point five times per unit at six units, uh, we came to the three hundred thousand dollar number. So if you're going to eight and you did it the same way, four thousand, four hundred thousand should be more than adequate, in my estimation, based on today's rates.
Well, suppose a family of four has a baby and they become a family of five, what happens to them?
Well, the baby's not earning any, any money, right?
I would hope not.
It's still gonna be the, the, based on the two, two-person income, and the amounts up there are what they cannot exceed. So if they were a family of four and made less than one sixteen-three, and became a family of five or even six, and made less than those dollar amounts, they still qualify. If, if it's, if it's a change in familial situation, that's when we go back and recertify.
All right, so if.
Do the whole income recertification.
If they became a family of three and their income stayed the same.
Well, family of three, meaning someone went to college? Because that person who went.
Whatever it means, that they become a family of three.
You, you take into account the circumstances, let's assume, um.
Suppose, suppose one of the, one of the earners dies.
Then that's something we'll have to take into account.
And what happens then?
Uh, we will get with the city and determine what, what the next steps are.
What are usually the next steps?
She wants to know if you're gonna evict somebody because they make more money here.
No, that, that's.
Because they own that house, so.
Because it's also, that's the maximum, right? So it's, it's an issue if you've paid less than that and you gain an earner, not if you lose an earner.
Or if your income increases in five years.
Right.
Um, what happens in that situation? I now make more money than I did five years ago.
Well, once again, on the recertification, the only time you recertify, you certify the income is on the initial sale. When we go back out, we're just checking to make sure.
It's the same people?
It's the same people, that there is no rentals, we'll be checking, uh, one of the things we ask for is a utility bill, to make sure the name on the utility bill matches the name.
But you don't check income on that yearly checkup?
No.
Oh, I didn't know that.
And no, no rentals?
No rentals.
No, that's in here, you can't rent it, you can't lease it out.
That's all in the H O A as well?
Uh, the C C N Rs, I would imagine would have some kinda limit on Airbnbs, knowing most C C N Rs, but that's neither here nor there. What this says, and what Mr. King has confirmed, is that when it says you can't lease or rent, that would also mean short-term Airbnb rentals. No one wants a, you know, party next door.
But it is across the board, though, I guess I'm asking, I mean, it's not just exclusive to these eight units?
This is only for those eight units, and that restriction's in here, I don't know if the C C N Rs would also prohibit short-term rentals. I don't know, I have a townhome I rented. All right, well, thank you, sir, appreciate it. That answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
My turn?
Yours.
I've got comments. Um, no, I mean, I, I, I wanna start by saying, I think this is a hard topic, right? I mean, there's a housing crisis in California, we have people on both sides wanting more affordability, if this was an entirely affordable project, we'd have people with an entirely different set of issues coming to talk to, to council or to commission and council. Um, the frustration, I think, maybe stems from agreeing to something that at the time wasn't feasible, period, so, but that's been done and we have to put that aside. I mean, that is, I think, what the, the upset is, that a company agreed to something that, that couldn't be possible then, and it's not possible now, but we're past that, cuz it happened. So now we're talking about what's possible now for a successful project for everybody, and we have two consultants and a company and, and our own math that shows that eight moderate units are, are saleable. And that you can get people in there who fit into these categories, military, El Segundo residents, El Segundo employees, I think would be a great addition as well.
Would be great.
And it's a, it's a public benefit, and you have a successful project at that, at that rate. Um, what else, what other comments? I would love to see extremely low, very low, low-income households, I agree, I think that's rental product. I've worked for affordable tax credit developers, nonprofit and profit, and that's kind of where those categories typically fall into, because there's federal tax credits and federal money in place. So I don't have an issue with the eight moderate income units. Um, I would love to have some discussion on whether the commissioners think twenty years is the, the number, or if it's a thirty-year restriction. I guess I was not thinking that that was staff's doing, I did think that it was from D.R. Horton to try to make those units maybe more sellable, but that doesn't sound like what it is, so. I, I don't know, I had one opinion coming in, I could, I could be a little more fluid now.
I think it's hard because it's a individual for-sale unit, and if you go thirty, you know, what are the costs twenty years from now, what are the costs twenty-five years from now from just monitoring and, and keeping up this whole maintenance?
Yeah, I think what you mentioned earlier would help me be more comfortable with twenty years, but again, I think we have to look into this, is at the end of twenty years, if then, you know, you're buying a home for four hundred thousand and twenty years, you're selling it for two million dollars. That's a huge gain, and yes, paying your, paying your mortgage, you should be able to accrue equity, but at what number? And is there a way for the city to recoup some of that?
Well, the beautiful thing about being here is we make the recommendations and the city council has to decide whether or not it's gonna fly, right?
Let's do it.
We can have a wish list.
And staff can write it, don't forget that.
Mr. King's got to figure out how to make it work. You know, we just get up there and say, in a perfect world, this is what we want to do, and maybe we get it, maybe we don't. Um, so let me try to, um, summarize what I think are some modifications to what's been presented. And I think as far as priority, we, we like, uh, military and veterans, especially being with the Air Force Base close by. Uh, should we open that up to civilians who work at the Air Force Base as well? Or we'll just say employees of El Segundo and residents of El Segundo?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I think like, yeah.
Right, so.
Employees of El Segundo and res, and.
Military, veterans, uh, residents of El Segundo and employees of El Segundo should get the same flowery treatment of prioritizing as much as possible within the confines of the law.
All things being equal.
Right, so you're just taking that same paragraph and you're adding some more folks to it. Um, and then advertising, uh, I want to ensure the city or D R Horton does everything they can to let the folks in town know, hey, if you want to buy one of these moderate income, this is how you do it. Uh, so something in the Herald, um, I, I don't know what else we can do that's kind of local.
Well, there's all kinds of magazines and there's.
They're doing a lot of social media.
Social media.
So that's going to fall to you, Mr. McLean, to, to figure out how the city will make sure to the full extent possible where, where advertising and letting folks know, because what will happen is these things will be sold and someone will complain that they never knew this was available to them.
Got it.
Um, and then I think the only third change, um, was this equity share requirement after the 20-year period. And, uh, I, I appreciate your point, Mr. King, about this kind going on forever, oh yeah. Um, but I, I, I do have concern about that person who owns it on the 20th year, just kind of winning lottery and anything this city can do to help obtain funds to create more housing, I think it's incumbent on us to try to make that happen, so. And, and in all fairness, when, if we disclose it when they buy it, then they know when they buy it. And it's not like they don't get any equity, they, they get 50% of that moderate income and I would propose they would still get that same equity. So whatever the rate is 30 years from now when they sell it, they get up to the moderate income price and then the city gets anything above that. And of course, if the market crashes, um, you know, we don't get anything, they don't get anything. And then the 300 to 400,000, thank you for that, uh, folks from D R Horton. Um, we would, I would suggest we recommend that as well. And then, um, uh, anything else that I've forgotten? I think we have a consensus on all of that, correct?
The, your, um, anything over and above at the end of 20 years, should they sell it? Goes to the city? Would a percentage be reasonable or what?
I, I think you can keep the same framework, 50/50. But the problem, well, I think that's fine. You're still getting a lottery winner that way.
What we, what we can look in is just to maximize the city's share after the 20-year period.
Right.
I mean, I, I hear the commission, I think the consensus is that you want to maximize city resources for future housing projects.
So that would just go into the same housing fund that.
Yeah, mm, yeah, we would, um, we would recommend that those monies go back to housing projects.
Well, is that clear in here? I know there's that 5% for the trust and then it says the city gets that equity. Can we make it that the, any equity that the city obtains from this low-income housing project is automatically set aside for future housing projects? As opposed to just going in the general fund and disappearing? Okay, I don't know if that's clear in here, I couldn't find it when I read through.
I don't think it's really, it wasn't really something that we needed to spell out between us and D R Horton.
Yeah, and I think it's more of a city council thing.
I, I think it's sort of presumed, but, um, you know.
Let's make that clear.
We can make it clear.
I would, I would appreciate that.
And then from the get-go, starting with, um, this being our very first opportunity to put money into that fund, what will the city be yielding, just in hypothetical numbers? What, 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 how much money is going to end up in that fund to start this process? So that we can create a, a committee and figure it out and work towards, um.
I don't think there's any way we could estimate that until there's a sale pending.
Okay.
And so, and it would depend on when it was sold, how much it was sold for, who it was sold to.
And, and we're assuming housing prices will continue.
And if every single one of them stays for 20 years, then, you know, that changes everything too, so.
Right.
What I would say is, um, um, you know, we'll look into it, we'll look at the legal issues and definitely if, if the housing fund is created and that's replenished by future, you know, sales, um, I'm, I'm sure that matter will come back to the planning commission because at some point there will be an affordable, affordable housing project that will be relying on those funds or, or those funds will be, so the planning commission would know, you know, what the status of that fund is at that time.
Are there any other revisions that we discussed and had consensus on that I didn't mention? I think they got them all down.
I think you've got them all.
Okay.
Now, are we, are we just, these are, these are just going to be recommendations that from here? You have to bring that back to the planning commission? You just, it'll move on to the city council? Okay.
Um, okay, uh, let me say, uh, Mr. Brio, Nick, I think you did a, a, an admirable job the first go around when you came, um, dealing with the city and, and talking with anyone, and I understand your point, eight, eight is better than six. Um, and, uh, I'm for getting as many affordable units as we can. And I, I think whether or not there is an additional, uh, benefit to the city is kind of beyond this dais and so I won't, I won't make any recommendation on that one way or another. But I, I do appreciate, um, the increase from six to eight. I, I think anything we can do to, best we can comply with what the state is maintaining is, is within our benefit. That being said, and anything else before we make a motion on this? Okay, I want to thank staff too for your time, especially Mr. King and Greg, I talked your ears off a lot about this, so thank you for your patience. So I tried to get up to speed. All right, uh, with that and with the, uh, direction that we've given to staff, I'll, I'll take a motion.
So it's a, walk me through what the motion would be, this with some amendments to it, correct?
Uh, let me see here, hold on. I'm on the wrong page.
Yeah, how about adopting, how about this one here? Along with the amendments, you could try that.
A motion to adopt resolution number 2858 and all accompanying ordinances and amendments with the following adjustments?
Well, as, the adjustments as dictated to staff, how do we say that?
That'll work.
They had copious notes, I think we got it down.
Don't make me repeat myself.
Fair enough, we've got a motion, is, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 4-0, thank you. All right, that brings us to, uh, agenda ma, aye, continued business, nun, and now Jay, uh, report from planning and building safety director, a designated.
I have nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Sam just skating by, okay. Uh, Kay, upcoming agenda items, uh, there wasn't anything?
Yeah, despite my, my best intentions, I've been in a meeting since the middle of the month and haven't had a chance to do this one.
Okay, uh, planning commissioner comments, I want to congratulate the high school soccer team for winning state again on the home turf. I wasn't able to be there, um, but I heard it was a great game and, uh, this is like, I think they're ranked sixth in the nation as far as soccer teams.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah, just an amazing, amazing team, and they actually had a game tonight, they're playing a little tournament right now. So if you get a chance to see these kids, I, I would recommend going. Um, and that's it, anyone else?
Nope, I'm good.
I had a question, maybe going back to one of our previous meetings about, um, items that then when they go before council, could be or should be accompanied by a commissioner?
Yeah, this is probably one of those, that's a good idea. Who wants to go? I'll go, that's fine, just let me know, when is it going to go to? City council? Just email me.
First meeting in April, the earliest, but it may be the other meeting in April.
Let me know and I'll show up in case they have questions and I can summarize the two-hour meeting we had, five minutes for them. That was a good point, thank you, Michelle.
Anytime.
Anytime you want to volunteer me to show up to city council.
Anytime I want to suggest something that you volunteer for.
All right, any other comments?
No.
No, okay, thank you everyone, we are adjourned, next meeting, March 14, 2019, 5:30 in these chambers, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.